Alright, it is May first, two thousand twenty-five, the time is six oh two P M. And I'm bringing this regular session of the Dunsmere City Council into order. Right, and with that, if everyone please stand for the black to me.
The white and agents. The United States of America. And to recover from vicious events. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And we could do roll call.
Uh, council member Hubbard.
Present.
Council member Lucasey.
Here.
Uh, Vice Mayor Sebring.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Clarino.
Here. And council member Brian has an excused absence this evening. On with that, we'll move on to special presentations and announcements. Unfortunately, the first presenter could not be here today. Uh, so we will have to uh table that presentation for another time. For those who are curious, that was Mandy Ladies. Uh, anti-tobacco presentation uh in connection with Dunsmere Elementary School. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to uh I M B Union Pacific derailment update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Peggy Egbohai, Senior Director of Public Affairs for Union Pacific Railroad. Uh, thank you for having me again. Wanted to come and give you a little update relative to the cleanup. We still have three cars and the cargo, the lumber that the cars were carrying. Um, just at Simpson Avenue, we are still working on a plan. The current plan right now is two phases. The first phase is to cut up the cars and the lumber. Put them in two different piles and then come back either with a train or with some trucks to then take all of the mess and put it in the trucks. Um, or or the gondola cars. I suspect we will likely use a train. The first phase of the project will not require a road closure. There may be some flagging, but the road will be open for use. The second phase will definitely need a road closure. There's going to be a lot of heavy machinery and equipment really in the road um as we are loading the gondolas. So we have already staged our changeable message signs. Right now, they it currently says the road will be closed. Date to be determined because we don't have Phase Two scheduled yet. We do plan to give at least seven days notice. It's my intent to give more notice than that. Um, I also visited a few of the residences earlier today just to give them my card, my number. Um, get their phone number so I can also outreach via phone and or email depending on the preference of the individual I spoke with. So that's where we're at. Um, I will continue to provide the city updates as as we progress and as things change.
Any questions? Maybe there are a few. Okay, um, since council member Brian is not here this evening, I'll launch into a few of the questions that I know I feel like he would probably be wanting to ask. Um, first off is uh, is there any uh cause or has any cause been identified for the derailment?
As far as I know, it's still under investigation.
Still under investigation, right? And then I know the second thing that he was very passionate about at the last meeting uh when you presented for us uh was on communication and seeing if we could open up additional lines of communication. You know, and I know you brought up that there's a lot of municipalities the railroad passes through that don't get notified. But we are in a special situation here where, you know, I'd say we have a higher percentage of derailments done probably or just above us and in town than any other municipality in the entire nation. Wouldn't be surprised if that was true. So I was just curious if you have looked into any other ways or any ways that we may be able to be notified uh faster in uh if an incident does occur.
Certainly, and we had a really good discussion with the sheriff's office here and, you know, we we've been able to take some lessons learned relative to our protocol, their understanding of our protocol and what the city is expecting to get from those notifications. So um, our protocol is is, you know, what we do over twenty-three states, like I explained last time. Um, we make all of these immediate notifications. The sheriff is is one of the first phone numbers that we call. And we depend on their phone ladder to then notify all of the local cities that are impacted.
Okay, and then um, I know there was some damage to Simpson Avenue. That may have been related to the um may have been related to all the equipment going up and down it. Has there been communication between the city and Union Pacific on?
We, I mean, we haven't made a claim with them yet. Oh, it's still under investigation. We did put road plates over that specifically, that area. Um, just to, because they're not done doing their work, so yeah, just trying to mitigate the hazard before it comes worse.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, I just have a kind of somewhat unrelated question, but you're here. One of the things I've noticed is we've had a number of trains stopping for longer periods of time at the yard with pretty extensive car lengths and walking the Butterfly Avenue and Shear Avenue crossings. Um, I experienced this actually on Monday where they were stopped for over forty-five minutes and I walked back and forth between Butterfly just to kind of wait time. It seems like a really excessive amount of time than normal. Um, thankfully, someone saw me and they said, well, actually, it's going to be stuck for another hour.
Oh.
And told me that I need to go walk around, but there is no actual pedestrian access.
Right.
For a couple of miles. Uh, and so I just ended up walking through the yard. Um, and the guy yelled at me, but I was like, what are you gonna do? There's no other way to walk. Um, but it's just something to maybe put on your guys' radar. There were a significant number of cars on Shear specifically that were just waiting for the train to move. Um, and there was no communication to anybody that the train was broke down. It was going to be another hour. Um, and it was right at about like five forty-five, six o'clock on Monday, so that's right at the time people are trying to get home or going to other shifts. Um, so just wanted to put that on your radar for communication with people that, you know, I've heard about it in the past. Um, but I experienced it was pretty excessive, you know, twenty, thirty minutes. Okay, I can live with that, but it was about an hour forty-five is what the weight was, so. This, I was stuck on the other side of the train tracks, so it is a problem we have, but.
Council member, this is a new problem or this is? Okay.
Yeah.
That particular train, did you? Were you told it was broke down?
Yes.
And that's why that was, okay.
Yeah, one of the Union Pacific workers saw me waiting on the other side of Butterfly and said, oh, you're going to be waiting for another hour.
Okay.
He said to walk around and I told him there is no way to walk around because the train cars had lined up past Shear.
Okay.
And I asked him if there's any other way around that he recommended and he said, no, that it was not his problem.
Okay, um, well, at every crossing, we have a one eight hundred number. And um, it's it's what is called an emergency notification sign that's required at every crossing. Every crossing has a unique identifier um called the D O T number. And you call the number and you say, hey, there's a train stopped here, you know, can I get a status update? And I, you know, it's a twenty-four-seven manned. It's the same phone number that we use for emergency dispatch um that can communicate to you what's going on with the train, what's the status and um get you in touch with me if if hey, we we need some immediate action here because we don't have any other access, right?
Great, thank you. I didn't know we had those signs.
Yeah, so the signs are at every crossing. Every crossing has a specific D O T number. Um, give that number when you're at the crossing. They're little blue signs.
Okay.
Uh, they're not the most noticeable signs. I'll 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 tell you because they're maybe this big. Um, but there's also a inventory app that you can download uh that the F R A, the Federal Railroad Administration has. And it's geolocated, so you can even just have that on your phone. Tap the W ten-one, the little railroad crossing sign and it'll tell you exactly where you're at and it'll give the number to the railroad to call.
That'd be great. It, I might follow up with you via email just to get some information out to a couple of people who had stated that this happens a lot to them and they didn't have any information. So that's good to know that you guys already have it.
Yeah, definitely report it so we can take action and and try to figure out what's going on and and how to avoid block crossings, especially in locations where you have no other access.
Yeah, thank you.
The uh other thing I wanted to just uh ask you while you're here, um, given that summer is almost upon us. Uh, as you're well aware, there's going to be tens of thousands of people walking up those tracks in over the next couple of months. Um, and I know that uh Union Pacific has expressed interest in working with the city or ex- or is expressed that they'd be willing to accept working with the city um in order to get a trail done. And I know, I believe, the last couple of stages there, kind of the ball was in Union Pacific's courts or Union Pacific's court to look at um some engineering plans and to look through some stuff. Uh, do you know the status on any of those or if possible, could you make sure that that's still uh being looked at and being worked on and being moved forward just because I know the last thing any of us want is for there to be a serious incident uh with someone walking up those train tracks.
Yeah, no, this has definitely been on my radar for the past couple of decades uh from the first time I seen Mossbury Falls. It's it's beautiful. It's gorgeous. I know why people are trying to make their way up there, but you know, we're we have um approved the concept plans. So at this point, Union Pacific is waiting for submission from the city.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, um, and I would ask if you don't mind to just maybe wait until after public comment. And then when we get to council and staff comment, if anyone asks a question that you feel is relevant to like during council comment, I'll let you answer that, not during public comments, so I don't want me back and forth, but if you want to address anything that comes up during public comment, uh that would be most appreciated. Thank you. Right, and with that, we'll move on to item number C, Siren Test Special Presentation. Welcome, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I am Adam Hutton. And this is a really interesting um kind of visit with you guys. I moved to Dunsmere in nineteen seventy-seven. And at that time, I think the advent of pagers had just kind of started and I was eight years old for the firefighters. So the siren was a huge part of the way that the firefighters got notified. Um, and as an eight-year-old, it scared the you-know-what out of me. But it also instilled something in me that, you know, someday I I may want to do that. And sure enough, when I turned eighteen, I started, I joined and I've been part of this department for thirty-eight years. As time has has traveled on, I kind of grew into a position where I became kind of the radio communications guy for the department and really for the city. And as part of that, we got to the point where the controllers for the sirens were obsolete. They were having issues and we needed to make a determination of what direction to go. And I had thought of the number of times that I didn't have my pager with me that I heard the siren and went, uh-oh. And I felt that was important to maintain that. And so I did the research. I found the new controllers. Um, we were able to convince the council at that time to upgrade them and to keep them. A majority of departments throughout probably the country, but certainly throughout this area, have given up their sirens over the years. And one of those obviously was Paradise. And they sure wish they would have had them. So that made me feel good. I'm somebody, when I get a new toy, radio, whatever, I I like to figure out, okay, what can I do with this? What are some cool things I can do with it? And so I noticed that you could set up, I think it was four or five different patterns of how the thing turns on and off. And at that point, I programmed it to do what we are now having implemented, which was having a distinct different pattern for an evacuation for what we call the the, oh, you-know-what moment. Um, and so that's been programmed into those things for probably twenty years now. But I've never had the courage or the whatever to actually set that evacuation tone off, one, because it really wasn't well-known. And you know, i- it's gonna be pretty substantial for the amount of time that it's gonna run. Um, but it's important. Um, there's a couple of, with the pattern, there's a couple of reasons why, because Stephen asked me, okay, do we need to run it for the full two minutes? And my reasoning for wanting to let it play out the full two minutes is that I don't know if any of you have ever had the pleasure of going in the dungeon that is the basement here. But there is a relic down there that I am fairly confident was built by the boiler shop in the South Yard. And that was the air tank that used to be connected to the air horn. And we had a few occasions where the valve broke and that thing stuck on and it would go for upwards of an hour before it would run out of air. Um, several years ago, somebody thought, you know, we ought to maybe purge some of the air from it. There might be some moisture in there. And boy, was there moisture in there. Um, so and a ton of rust and we just couldn't keep that online as a safety factor. So we're down to just the the tank on the regular compressor. Um, so one of the questions and one of the things that we've debated within the fire department is is there gonna be enough air to go two minutes? We don't know. So we're gonna find out. And if there isn't, we'll have to probably get with you guys and see if we can come up with a solution for it. Um, the one nice thing about the air horn as opposed to the sirens is that it is not necessarily power-dependent. The sirens, if the power's out, they no go. So the air horn still works, so that's kind of a cool thing. Um, anyway, the main thing is that this is pretty exciting for me as a kid who grew up in Dunsmere. As a thirty-eight-year veteran of the fire department and as an emergency manager for the county. This is kind of like boom, everything that is kind of my life kind of thrown together. So I'm really excited. Um, so our plan at this point, coordinating with with Stephen is we're gonna send out a Ready Siskiure Notification to the General Dunsmere area, the areas that should hear the siren um at five fifty P M tomorrow night. So we're hoping that message will go out to everybody who has signed up for that notification system. Um, and then at six P M sharp, we will set off the evacuation tone. And we will see what happens. See how the sirens sound when it cranks up. Is it gonna, is two seconds long enough for the siren to reach its apex or not? We don't know. We've never tested it, so this is, this is exciting. Um, so obviously, um, this is a big deal. And there are going to be people who aren't in the know who are gonna probably get a little little disturbed, a little freaked out because this is not normal. But that's the whole idea of it. And we want it to be that way. And the thinking within within our office and we've talked with Stephen and he has been on board a hundred percent is that this is when i- this is reserved for the, oh, my god moment. Um, so that would be at the minimum an evacuation order. Um, and and that's where we're at. Um, I think that pretty well covers my portion of it. Um, are there any questions or or things that you guys have that I might be able to help enlighten?
Um, well, first off, I'd just like to say I really appreciate the fact that um Stephen, I believe, does a, or I saw the post on Facebook and I believe it was most likely Stephen who put it out there just to give people some knowledge there. And I also really appreciate how long that notification sign has been out through town.
Yeah, and that was something I I pushed for through my office. And for certain things, uh, we at O E S, we purchased two of those signs, one that's the cool color one, like what's there now, and one that's your standard, like what you normally see on the road. And we utilize those for many different things. Um, but we do have those. Um, so, um, and they're you know, pretty, pretty good tools. So uh, don't hesitate if there's some sort of a situation that may call for those, I would encourage you to reach out to Director Shinoni and see if we can make arrangements to to help you out with that.
Yeah, I like all the preparation. I'm really appreciative that we're doing this test. I think it's a great thing. Um, you know, just the daily tests are such an hmm. And give this town so much character and also make sure that everything keeps safe despite the fact that I think it scares the out of anybody who's standing right next to City Hall and doesn't realize it's about to be noon. Um, but yeah, I'm definitely in very happy that we're doing a more and or more expensive test.
Great, and thank you.
So that notification system, is that through text message?
The, it will, the Ready Siskiure System comes through phone.
Okay.
Text, email. And it also has the capability, but we won't be utilizing it in this instance where it can post to the county O E S Facebook as well. Um, the other portion of it that we're not going to be doing for this test because it requires some upfront a lot of upfront notification is what's called the I-Pause System, which is the integrated public alert and warning system. That's the nationwide system. That's the one that comes over your phone and makes that horrible noise that that you can, you know.
Yeah.
That, you know, everybody goes, uh-oh. So, um, we're not going to be using that for this test. We are cons- we are going to be having a countywide test of Ready Siskiure um tentatively scheduled for June eleventh. And we are right now looking at also pushing an I-Pause as part of that. Um, just so that people, hey, if you get this I-Pause and you didn't get everything else, you're not signed up, so you need to need to get off the dime. Um, it's also our best practice when we send out an evacuation order. Our best practice is to send out an I-Pause as well. Um, we don't do that for the evacuation warnings, but we do do that for orders as a best practice. There's obviously always exceptions, but generally, that's what we do. Um, so, yeah.
Awesome. And for the public's knowledge, how would they sign up for this?
So if you go to ready siskiure.gov and that is uh kind of your one-stop shop to go in and sign up, um, there's some other, there's a couple of other cool features with it. One is that you can select like the weather for the South County to receive notifications. And what that is, is if there is a weather warning such as a winter storm warning or a tornado warning or a tsunami warning, um, which is the one thing that Brian Shinoni hasn't got on his scorecard yet is a tsunami.
We're, we're
He got the hurricane. Would have never thought that one, but anyway, um, so that's one of the cool features of it. The other thing that um is nice about it is that you know, we will work with the city and we have worked with the city to put out uh notifications to the public that, hey, we're plowing snow tonight. You gotta get your car off the street. And so those are the other things that that can be done with that system. Um, and it has been a very good system and if you're not signed up for it yet, I absolutely encourage you to. Um, if you know people that are struggling to get signed up, um, if they get a hold of uh our office, we will assist or I mean, we've gone as far as signing people up um while they're on the phone with us or or what have you. Um, but it has been a big, big step forward for us, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I just want to say, um, I I hope you do do the I-Pause. Uh, coming from the Midwest and being in tornado zone, I could tell you I-Pause is is like the best thing ever because it doesn't matter where you're at. When you see take cover, you just take cover because it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Right? And so it is a great tool that you guys have that. And so I I hope that you're gonna test it out too, so everybody can see.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a couple of things that complicate the use of I-Pause. One is that it's not nearly as pinpoint as far as the area.
It's cell phone tower-based.
Yes. It, uh, for the older phones, as the phone technology grows, it's getting better. But the other thing is that, again, with the older phones, you're limited to ninety-six characters in your message. And to try to put out a functional, meaningful message that doesn't cause problems with only ninety-six characters can be challenging.
This is a test, this is a test.
Yeah, so, um, you know, an example was during the uh McKinney Fire, they put an I-Pause out that basically said there's a fire you need to evacuate. And people in Grants Pass, Oregon received it. That was not good. That was not good. So that was, that was a a lesson learner for our office. We gotta be able to be a little more specific. Um, so that's the kind of the downside, but the power of of the I-Pause for getting the message out. One of the things we did this winter with it, which I think was fairly effective, was we actually put an I-Pause out when I five was snowed in and blocked to basically tell people, hey, don't go there and don't try to follow your ways around because those roads are probably going to be worse. So anyway, anything else?
I just have one quick question here. So in the event of an actual emergency or evacuation uh where this, the siren would sound in this pattern, and you said it would go for two minutes. And one thing I've always been curious about, does it just go for two minutes once or is then they're like five minutes, do it over again, or if it was as serious, would there be consideration to start the two-minute cycle over?
That is an option. It can be reset and started again, but how it's programmed is solely for the two minutes. Um, the way that it that it actually will get set off is one of the members of the fire department. We've got panels in our radio deep in a bank where hopefully nobody can really find them until they need to. Um, and then you just have to scroll up the channel that says evacuation. Key the radio and it sets it off. So if you wanted to set it off five minutes later, do the same thing again. It's by no means a perfect system, but it's it's where we're at right now. Um, and my goal is to get more of our personnel with our radios up to speed with doing it. And we do have folks who are good with that. Um, the one thing that's a little bit problematic is that there are a total of seven devices between Castella and the North Dunsmere Water Tank. And it's possible to set them off individually, but it's a little more problematic. And typically, if there's gonna be that, oh, my god moment, we're gonna, we're just gonna set them off. Um, and so it's gonna notify a pretty good-sized area. Um, at this point, the siren in Castella is down and the one in Craigview is partially down. It sort of works, but not real well. And we're working towards getting those squared away. But to my knowledge, everything up here is is working in tip-top shape. There was a concern the other day that the one at the North Dunsmere Water Tank was not working and Danny went up there, called me, okay, what do I gotta do? I said, well, do this, and went right off. So the. Generally, the public is pretty good at. Getting a hold of City Hall when it doesn't work. Or when I forget to come down and reset the clock when daylight savings starts or ends. That's one of the, one of my pet peeves is to try to make sure I do that clock. And in fact, I even. Bought a new clock that's tied into the atomic clock. But I forgot to set the daylight savings change thing. And so it. And I can't get back in it right now with the Wi Fi setup the way it is because it won't let me go. From one thing to another. So at some point, I'm gonna. Tie it back in with a network cable and fix that, but. In any, in any. Case. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work. All right.
Sorry, Michael. I did want to just go over a few quick things real quick. So the test comes along with our new evacuation siren policy that we just came up with. So that's another reason for the test right now. And I do want to just re hit on. The policy is that the siren will not go off for an evacuation warning. It will only go off for an evacuation order, which is the most severe. Issuance. An evacuation order means thou must leave. So that's when the siren will go off. If you hear people saying, oh, I had no idea about it, make sure you tell them to sign up for Ready Siskiyou. Because if they were assigned up, they would have known about it. And that's also, you don't want to wait for the siren to go off and then try to figure out what's happening. You want it coming to your phone. So sign up for Ready Siskiyou. And then just a reminder that the, as the policy is written now. In an evacuation order, the siren will only go off for two minutes and then it's done. As of right now, we do not have plans to set it off again. We feel that might cause confusion. As it's written now, it's one and done, two minutes. It's just to alert you something's happening. The siren doesn't tell you what's happening. It just, you know, if you know the evacuation tone, you know it's an evacuation, but you don't know where. So sign up for Ready Siskiyou. And then I did actually just throw in some Greenway State stuff into the slide also that I just want to go over real quick. Greenway State, May third, which is this weekend, from eight to three at the Ball Field Parking Lot, rain or shine, it's going to rain, so. We'll still be there. Twelve properties were helped on Monday for the Volunteer Mitigation Day. McConnell Foundation, Mount Shasta Bio Regional Ecology Center Core and some non affiliated volunteers were all there for that event. So thank you very much. We had nine properties signed up already for our next volunteer day in October. That was based on five of the properties we couldn't get to. Plus, we had some that were waitlisted. And I've already had one or two more call in since. So we're almost full for October already. Cal Fire came on Wednesday and chipped the piles that the volunteers made. It was twelve piles total. We already have filled one dumpster. With green waste and the Greenway State hasn't even happened yet. And we have nineteen properties signed up for volunteer pickup. We have five pickup truck drivers. So we're going to be really busy on Greenway State. And I'm sure we're going to have. People lining up just like last time. We're going to be there at seven forty five because last time there were trucks there at seven forty five. I'll be there at seven thirty, so. I'm sure people will be there early. We do have volunteers coming on Saturday from as far away as Chico State. So really grateful for all our volunteers that we've been having help us with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And with that, we'll move into public comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the city council on any matter of city business or anything that affects the city. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. I'll give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by those on Zoom. If you would like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. With that. I will open this up for public comment.
Andrea Herr, forty seven forty Simpson Avenue. And I've got several things, so I'll be efficient. One is I'd like to thank Peggy for coming by the house today and talking to us about the road closures coming up on. On Simpson. Down by the derailment. And so the only thing I would like to do is again encourage you and and the council and all of us. To try to push for more train safety and and just to maybe find out what what is being done. I think you've talked about that some. But you know, things like. Fewer cars and more snap. Slower speeds in real critical areas like our windy canyon. So, but thank you so much for coming by it. I really appreciated that. And will help us plan. I want to thank Stephen and all the volunteers, you know, for the fire mitigation. I, you know, they were working incredibly hard. It was, it was amazing. And I know there are a lot of families, it sounds like, signed up for October. Thank you. I want to thank the council and and the city for. The support they've given to the Dunsborough Community Resource Center in the past and hope that you will continue to. Support, give them some support in the future. They had two events recently that were really helpful. One was a volunteer fair. That's where I. Saw a way I had heard about the fire mitigation. At a city council meeting and I saw Stephen there and talked to him about it and and signed up and it was incredibly helpful. And we were there with Rotary as vendors, as service providers, but. You know, I know a lot of us went around and talked to the different organizations and agencies and. You know. Found services that were available and helpful. And then my husband and I also went to the Senior Resource Fair and that was, I think, very successful as a chance for seniors to get together and. Visit with friends, meet new people. And also learn about what services are available. There were seven or eight at least community organizations and agencies that serve seniors and. Again, it was just a very successful event. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hicks, I'll be remarkably brief. I would like to, if possible. Have the city. Update the community on the status of our downtown city Wi Fi. And we haven't heard a word about that for quite a long time. And maybe something. With the water bills or something, just so we know. It exists, who can use it, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And.
I'm glad. You mentioned the volunteer fair because I went to that myself. Oh, I'm John Pittsir. I live in Riverwood Mobile Home Park. And I wasn't absolutely certain whether I belong here or not because. Technically, it's not in Dunsborough. You know, it's just south of the city limit, but nevertheless. My mailing address is Dunsborough, so I figured I could come. But I want to thank everybody for. Such an orderly meeting. Because. It's been quite a few years since I've been to a city council meeting. My wife and I moved here in two thousand two. And we started going, well, at least I did, to the city council meetings. Then we moved out to Big Springs area. In twenty thirteen. And we moved back in twenty twenty one. I won't go into detail about all the whys. Nevertheless, I'm here. And. I don't know that I recognize anybody here tonight that was, unless Mr. Hicks. I think I remember you. Yes. But he and somebody else that was here may remember that back then. I was advocating for an invocation at the city council meetings. And. Without going into detail. I still think that's important. I will. Mention right now, no one else has, but I hope you all know that today is the National Day of Prayer. Which was first proclaimed by Harry Truman back in nineteen forty seven, I think. And I didn't get to see it. I was listening on the radio, but. Today, there was a meeting in Washington with President Trump and. Encouraging our nation to once again seek God in prayer. I believe prayer is a personal thing. But I do believe also. That it can be a national thing because. All the nation is made up of localities like us and like each of us is individuals who live in. Localities. So I simply here to say. Whatever can be done. I I was glad to see on the back here, it says you do not discriminate on the basis of. Religion is one of the items. Sometimes that's left off. Disclaimers, but it's not here, so I'm glad. But I just want to encourage. Whether it be through. Some kind of. Motion or whatever it takes to revisit the idea of having an invocation at these meetings because I think it's very important. We have a national chaplain.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Okay, I thought you said three seconds. I'm going to wrap it up with that anyway, but I do. Appreciate the fact, one thing you said, my friend, about, oh, my God moments. That is actually a prayer. People think it is or not. In a time of crisis, well, let's put it this way. I don't think we should wait until a time of crisis to call upon God. Anyway, thank you for your time. I hope to be back again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one, I will close public comment for this evening. And we will move on to council and staff comments. Thank you so much. The sheriff is not here today, so we will go straight to city manager.
All right, mayor and council. We got firefighters doing wildfire, firefight, wildland training this Saturday. It's kind of the theme of the the month has kind of been mitigation and wildfires. We've had. Three vegetation fires in the last forty eight hours within our area, one down at Gibson, one in McLeod, and then there was one other, oh, there was a structure fire. In Mount Shasta, so. Just a good opportunity to make everybody aware with our Green Waste Days coming up and I'll let Stephen expand on that. But from the city standpoint, we have been doing stump grinding and a lot of our own vegetation management. We have. They're out active today, cleaning up the city. And so just a reminder to keep going on that. It is. For having vegetation fires at the first of May, it's already a concern, so we need to just be aware of that. We we did grind a bunch of stumps around town and the sidewalks and stuff, and so that kind of preps us to begin some sidewalk repairs in those areas and in the parks. We put in two new light poles down in the park. To replace ones that were rotted or missing. And then. Let's see, what else have we done? Most everything else is I've done is associated with budget and. And then Stephen and his group of volunteers have done a huge effort towards cleanup, so. That's kind of where we're at from the city manager's spot.
Stephen, anything else you'd like to talk about for Green Waste Day?
Not for Green Waste Day, I already covered that, but I. That did give me thinking. The trees that are marked down in Tallinn Dolly Park, those are the ones that are being kept. They do have crews down there working. It's fish and wildlife crews, I believe. So just if anyone sees those trees and are concerned that they're going to be cut down, it's the opposite of what you think. The ones that are marked are staying. They're just focusing on the brush. And then we do have. Cal Fire coming the first week of June to do more work down in Tallinn Dolly Park and a few other areas around the city as well.
Thank you. All right, council member Robert.
No, Stephen just answered my question. We're good.
Just a reminder that the California Arts Council has funding still. We're working on some grants with a couple of different people in the community for, there's several different grants under the Arts Council for different art projects throughout the city. So if people are interested, please get in contact with me. Putting a program together for that. And then I would just like to thank the city and the Public Works Department for filling the potholes on Oak Street. I really appreciate that, especially having a low clearance car. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
I have no comments.
And I, let me just double check the calendar here before I make, say what I want to say. Yeah, okay. And I would just like to also remind anyone that there is the Chamber of Commerce. Alexander Dunsborough Award Dinner next Friday. There are tickets available for sale, I believe, at the Chamber of Commerce. If you're interested in going, it is a catered dinner to honor. People in the community and businesses in the community that have. Put in a lot of work and honor their dedication to the community. And with that, we will move on to committee reports, which. You guys did have a findings committee meeting, correct?
Well, we did not have quorum, so we technically did not have a finance committee meeting, but I did, we meet with members of the finance committee and we did discuss. Overall budget, kind of just more of the technical, technical aspects of the budget and stuff like that because they were both new members.
And I do believe that we are looking to have a finance committee meeting potentially on Monday and the following Monday.
Yes, so we're planning one Monday, this coming Monday, and then one on the twelfth for audit.
Yeah, the one on the twelfth is a one hundred percent certainty. And but we're also looking to try to fit in a one to do some preliminary budget stuff as well. Any other committees need?
None.
All right, with that, we'll move on. We do not have a minutes set of minutes to approve for this meeting, it looks like. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item number eight. The consent agenda. Which consists of two items, the check register for four twelve, two thousand twenty five through four twenty five, two thousand twenty five. And I would be authorized mayor to sign claim form for city to receive two thousand.
Gentlemen, if we could keep the discussion in the hallway, please. It's very hard to concentrate when all of us are talking and you're also talking, so please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the second item, authorized mayor to sign claim form for city to receive two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six funds from the local transportation commission.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda items eight A and B.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
And agenda adopted. With that, we'll move on to public hearings, which we have none. So we'll go into item ten, old business. Approve the legal services agreement appointing the firm of Richards, Watson and Gerson or Gerson. R W G as city attorney of Dunsborough. City Manager Reece.
All right, mayor and council. So I do have David Lim, representative of R W G on on Zoom, but. The city put out a RFP February twenty sixth of this year. We received three. Three candidates for city attorney. We, the council chose to interview two of them by, and then. We have now, after those interviews, council gave myself and council member Brian the directive to. Basically negotiate the agreement with. With R W G and I'm looking forward to having them on board and. Kind of just a quick overview of the agreement itself. So we are. We're entering into one with Richard Watson and Gershon. And their primary location is based out of San Francisco, I believe.
Or that's the office.
The office, yes. And they have, they have more offices throughout the state, but that's, that's the location in which presented the the RFP. And. We are entering into an agreement with. Twenty five hours as our. Basically, general services underneath the retainer. And so. If you've got any questions, David is right there on the screen. Unmute him.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I know we definitely got to ask quite a few questions during the interview. Happy. I'd like to thank the city manager and council member Brian for meeting with them and. Working out the details of the contract, including doing some negotiation on the finance portion. And with that, any questions before we move into public comment?
You could just request David, maybe just give a brief introduction for the general public.
Perfect. David, if you'd like to, yeah, just give a little introduction to yourself and the firm for the public who are present today.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and members of the city council and city manager and members of the Dunsborough public. My name's David Lim. I'm a shareholder at the firm of Richards, Watson and Gershon. I apologize for my informal appearance and the background noise. I'm at my son's. Middle School musical premieres tonight, so I'm manning the doors, but I stepped away to take this call. And also on Zoom with me is Abigail Ellerman, who's going to be one of our associates, who's going to be assisting city of Dunsborough. I am an attorney of twenty six years experience. I am an attorney of twenty six years experience, I served eighteen years as a deputy district attorney in Alameda County as a prosecutor. I've been doing city attorney work now, going on six years, I'm also do work for the city of Fairfield, San Francisco County Harbor District. We're very excited to be working with the city of Dunsmere. We're looking forward to getting to work, we already have a, you know, assuming that you all approve us today, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled tomorrow. With Mr. Reeve to go over the work product, work projects that need to be done. And then I'm planning on coming up there, hopefully in about two or three weeks to get to meet everybody in person, have some office hours and hit the ground running, so. Happy to take any questions, but otherwise, we're very excited to be providing city attorney services for the city of Dunsmere.
Thank you.
Thank you, and before we go into public comment, one thing that definitely impressed me about the firms, just so everyone's aware is. Multiple attorneys at the firm and multiple staff members at the firm, in addition to being attorneys had had prior experiences. Either elected officials or city staff, which we felt was a very valuable. Very valuable experience, you could give them some very valuable, yeah, asset, yeah, that was a very valuable asset to us, so. With that, if there's no further questions, I will open this up to public comment. Please limit any public comment to do this particular items, three minutes, I will give a thirty second warning. If you are on Zoom, please go to the react tab and raise your hand to signal that you'd like to make a comment, and with that, I will open this up to public comment. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item.
Appreciate you being on the phone, David, and we want you to get back to your kids' musical play, whichever one you have and enjoy that. So I'll make a motion to approve legal services agreement and appoint Richards, Watson and Gershon as the city attorney for the city of Dunsmere.
And I'll second.
All right, this does have a financial impact, so we will be doing a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present.
Councilmember Lucasey. Vice Mayor Sebring. And Mayor Clarino.
Hi, and once again. Thank you, remember Brian is absent today, and yep, thank you very much for coming, enjoy the musical and we look forward to seeing you up here in a few weeks.
Yep, thank you, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to eleven new business, there are three items today, we'll start with item A, approve first reading of ordinance. Five seven nine, adopting fire hazard severity zones.
Actually, I'm going to pass that over to Stephen as this is his item.
So the state has recently released new fire hazard severity zone maps, these are to replace the previous maps, which are. A little over ten years old, maybe fifteen years old now, these, the map in terms of difference for the city of Dunsmere is not very different at all. The entire city, except for the airport, was previously very high fire hazard severity zone. Now, the entire city, including the airport, is very high fire hazard severity zone, so there's really no change. However, we do have to adopt the new map because it is state law that we have to adopt the new map, and you do that through ordinance, so that's what's before you today. It is a very simple ordinance. I don't really have anything else to add to that, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? I do know that a member of the public had brought some concerns to our attention just before the meeting that they had with this. What was the date that this needed to be adopted by?
We have until June, it's, I believe, a hundred and twenty days and it was released in February. So I believe that is June sometime.
You know, if it's the first meeting in June, the second meeting in June.
Actually, this one was January twenty second, two thousand twenty five, but I know there was an amended version that I believe is like. February twelfth or something like that, so I believe it is.
It's February twelfth, I believe, is what, yeah.
So I believe it would be June twelfth or June thirteenth.
Yep, so we, as long as it's by the first meeting and we just need two meetings to get it in. So technically, this could be tabled to the next meeting because we have one at the end of the month and then we have one in June. So if that needed to happen to address concerns, we can do that.
And I know that particular citizen is in the audience, and I do believe they plan on addressing the entire council with the. Particular concern they have with this agenda, so I will let them, we'll let them bring it up to us. And with that, are there any questions before we go into public comment?
No.
No, all right, with that, I will open this up for public comment. Three minutes, thirty seconds, please limit any comments to this particular item, I'll give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. If you are on Zoom, please go to the react tab and raise your hand, and with that, we will go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city manager Reeve. I have some concerns about this that I bring in the spirit of trying to be helpful to adoption of an ordinance. That I think is of concern to every property owner within the city. It was just said that there were no changes in the ordinance, but I printed out the ordinance today and I noticed that. First. At the bottom of the. Sections five, one, one, eight, two, it shows that it was amended in two thousand twenty four and effective in January first, two thousand twenty five. So I believe there may be things in the ordinance itself that need to be looked at, rather than that we're just adopting something that already exists. So I don't believe we're actually adopting just a map, although I have no objections to that. I think homeowners here have a big struggle about insurance, fire insurance, getting it. The insurance I had, I had Hartford for about three or four years, and then all of a sudden, they were telling me they wanted me to convert my property, which is a whole acre. Into a parking lot again, which is what it was when I bought it and tried to change it into a residence, so I'm concerned. Eventually, they became really ridiculous, telling me like a bonsai tree had to be moved away from the house. And the little pot, things like that, so rather than deal with them, I, as a, because I'm a veteran, I called USAA. They just wrote me up in fire insurance without. Doing more than asked me the routine questions, you know. Things, and I told them what I'd been doing and how the city had this fire safe thing. They just wrote me up over the phone, I was really happy, so I commend USA aid of those people who are either veterans. Or are family members of veterans, like children of veterans and so on, they can qualify. About the ordinance. My main concern is that a separate section. Which would be section five, one, one, eight, three, A and B. That was amended in two thousand twenty one, and it says, the local agency may exempt from the standards. Set forth in section five, one, one, eight, two. Structures with exteriors constructed entirely of non-flammable materials. Pardon?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, or conditioned upon the contents and composition of the structure and may vary the requirements, respecting the management of fuels surrounding. The structures in those cases, I would like to see the city, before it enacts this, go through the process of figuring out. What exceptions could be made to help accommodate those of us who live in a forested community. I'm, I guess that's the main point of what it can make, and I'd be happy to help, I'm going to leave a copy of the highlighted ordinances. Statutes.
Yeah, I gotta cut you off there, David, but we'll take a look, or yeah, I'd love to take a look into that.
Thank you so much.
All right, any other public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will go into council discussion. Right.
I guess really quick to kind of go over the science of the map itself, so the map is set by Cal Fire, which is the California Department of Forestry and Fire. And so essentially, we don't have influence over this at this point, it has gone through a couple peer review processes. At the state level, and this is the final result of that, now as a city, we can advocate to be more strict. We can't be, we cannot advocate to be less strict than what the state regulation is, I'm not sure what's more strict than a hundred percent very high fire. So I don't have anything to recommend for that, I will say, thank you, Mr. Hicks, for your comments, my understanding is those are the state. Regulations around this kind of piece and kind of influence the building code interpretation. The adoption of the map itself does not change that, we are statutorily required to adopt the map. And essentially adopt it in its form in which the California Department of Forest and Fire have essentially given us. I've gone through this with the city of Waireka, I'm actually really surprised you're doing it as an ordinance, because I believe you can just adopt the map in one resolution. So you didn't have to do it twice, but. I, I, it's all fine, we're just going above and beyond that, but over, overall, though, the map is determined by looking at. Topography as well as canopy cover vegetation density, and one of the things to note is that the city of Dunsmere is going to continue to be at a very high level. Even if we were to nuke every tree in this jurisdiction, just due to the topography of the canyon. And so going back to this map, we've essentially had this same map for the last, you know, ten plus years. In terms of indirect effects, you know, this map does not necessarily go into the insurance calculations nearly as much as what we call our ISO rating. Which is an insurance rating of one through five, I can never remember which one is more important, which side is better. But I believe the city of Dunsmere is a four.
I, ISO one is the highest.
Thank you, it's the best.
Yes, the best.
But in terms of ISO, that is determined by a number of different factors within the city, one is your water system, your fire hydrants. When were they last replaced, your fire department, the type of apparatus that your fire department have, the age of those apparati. And a number of other things that go into that, so in terms of like indirect impacts to insurance, this map really does not have the impact. As much as other types of measures that we could be doing through our hazard mitigation plan and safety element that Stephen's working on. So just kind of talking about that, what the map is, where that's at, essentially what it is, is requiring vegetation management pieces. And that's kind of more of the important piece of this is that we are in a very high wildfire severity zone, therefore, we are under some of the most strict requirements. In the vegetation management, and then it requires a different level of building within the city itself, so roofing, siding, soffits. Things like that change, but we've already been existing in this zone, so it really does not impact current residents. You know, adopting this at this time, it's essentially the same as what we've been operating under.
So you might be aware of this, I, because I did read the ordinance or the. Part of the law, and maybe get your opinion on this, if you. Haven't, basically what had made it sound like me was that, that particular part right there was if someone uses construction materials. Beyond the standard, then they could potentially, if we could lower other. Regulations on their potential.
Yes.
And is that already baked into the ordinance that we have, such state law, that we can just do that, set that independently of what we're doing here. Tonight, to your knowledge?
So, you know, without looking at everything in that specifically, I would have to take a look at and analyze. What, how does that code regulation, that state regulation interact with the California building code, fire code? And so essentially, you know, goes to the fire code and building code, frankly, usurp a lot of different things that we have within. The regulations, so I'm not sure how that interacts with it, one of the things that is required, though, if you are going to be doing a local standard building code. Which cities can do, cities can adopt their own local building code, it has to be the same level of restrictiveness, if not more restrictive. Than the California code, so a lot of people do not invest in that, a lot of the cities that you'll see invest in a local code are these much more. Fluid cities like Berkeley, you know, I think has their own building for the section, Sacramento, I think does as well. And so there is a very high burden of proof that you would have to show, so you would have to show. Statistical evidence that that siding or that system is more efficient than what is currently prescribed. So one of the examples from. All right, one of the examples from the Palisades Fire of a structure that did survive is that these architects had installed a flame retardant. Sprinkler system on the exterior of their home, which essentially was like a half circle that shot flame retardant red dust. That coated the entirety of the outside of their house, so that would be a system that we would have to essentially show and develop regulations. How, how often is that tested, so there is a very high burden that has to be put on the city to justify. Usurping the California building code to be able to engage in other activities, it's doable. But it is a process to do that, and that's my initial interaction with that regulation, but there could be other guidance or case law interpretation. That allows for another interpretation behind. So essentially, you're building in a much higher standard than you would typically.
Well, since we have two meetings and apparently since also this may not even be an ordinance, I'm fine if it is. I'm just going to move to table this to the next meeting, I would just like to get that. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm fine either way, but. That might be a good thing to just run and see if we need to do it as an ordinance and get their disinterpretation on whether or not. We can examine people require standards. Before we move forward, and if we need to, we'll just, well, we will need to move forward at the next meeting, so I'm going to, I'm moving to be tabled this to the next meeting. All of them in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Item B, approve staffing change proposal, approve staffing change proposal authorizing the city manager hire a full time. Temporarily maintenance worker.
Okay, mayor and council, so over the last year, the city has took on the responsibilities. Of the parking rec department and what they used to handle at the ball field and at Tallinn Dolly and also down at the botanical gardens. And last year, we had two more authorized employees at that point in time, as we were transitioning through retirements of. Ron LaRue and Tony Kanji, and they've since retired, and we have two vacancies currently that we are advertising. And have not been able to hire for yet, but there's, there's enough just vegetation and parks related maintenance that during the summertime. We feel that we need additional help to to accomplish that, so what I'm requesting the council to do is to. To allow me to, basically, this is a change to our staffing plan that was approved in our previous budget. Just because of timing, it doesn't line up with our budget, it doesn't make sense for me to hire somebody when the grass is all dead in July or August, but. Now is a more appropriate time, and so I'm bringing this forward to ask to be able to hire a. A temporary, full time temporary maintenance worker, so that's basically, that's in accordance with the MOU with the union. That is the definition of what I would call a seasonal worker. And that there, there's limits that are in place, Calpers has limits, and then of six months from hire date. And also a nine hundred and sixty hour limit, or then we have to pay Calpers, and so I am, that is kind of the cap of where I am. Requesting this position, so we don't go into any benefits related expenses and stuff like that, it's basically just. I would normally call them just a seasonal worker, but that is the definition provided in the MOU, and I have an example of the job description in there. It's not much different than what our current maintenance worker position is, except I excluded something specifically associated with. With the wastewater treatment plant and certifications, stuff that's associated with that, so if you have any questions, I'm open. To have any discussion about it.
All right, any questions? All right, I will open this up to public comment, same rules as before, three minutes, thirty second warning. When this time is almost up, please limit anything or any. Comments to this particular item, and with that, I will open this up for public comment.
Yes, Boy Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue. I'd like to speak to this issue. There's some of the terms, full time means eight hours a day, temporary means less than full time employment. So when you put the two together, it sounds kind of odd, but I understand Calpers. I have worked in these positions. I have worked in these positions, understand that the six-month position. Allows, because it is seasonal, allows that employee to draw full benefits on unemployment. If one considers the fact that you're paying like twenty-two, twenty-five dollars an hour for a man to work. Then you will be paying that man about eighteen dollars an hour not to work. At that point, if you were to hire him full for a a full year. You get a seven dollar a month employee, or seven dollar an hour employee, I think that's a benefit to both the city and the employee. Also, the fact is that those positions tend to be when you do have either listing, it's gotta be listed one or two ways, six month. Or nine hundred and eighty hours, I believe is hers, it says here in the document nine hundred and sixty. I'm gonna take that as a consideration that it can't be, they used to call them thousand hour employees. The thousand hour employee is a full-time employee is a person. I don't like to see the, I don't like to see any job that starts out with an abusive situation. I myself was a a six-month employee and I got to the point where I was working full-time without union position. It becomes an abusive situation, a temporary worker would do more things without train, proper training to get them done. Thinking he's going to get full-time employment, also I see in the motion that you've made forward in front of you. I think it's a typo error because it says six months and nine hundred and sixty hours. If you make that motion, you will be hiring a full-time employee. Because that's what the night, that's what the, that's what the, the limit with Calpers is, if you hire that person on a regular basis. Regular meaning that he does that every year, I have thought that and the fact is, that is an interpretation. I think is regular, it says regularly works the schedule, so I think that that needs to be corrected when you do that. But my suggestion would be go ahead and try to see if you could look into this and then hire that person full-time, because he becomes then a. City of, it it becomes a city of Dunsmere employee for six months of the year, and he becomes an artist for the state. Being a worker and an artist, he becomes an artist for the state that allows him to draw unemployment.
Thank you. Anyone else? You are on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please go to the react tab and raise your hand. See no one, I will close public comment on the side of it. Okay, um.
So, so just to clarify, so, um. Nine hundred and sixty-six hours, I believe is technically the limit, we put it at nine sixty because we wanted to make sure we had a little leeway. Um, we have reviewed it with the Calpers required limits, and I do thank you for the notice of that or, because that's what I actually meant to type. In uh, uh, when I was doing this at five o'clock in the morning the other morning, so.
I was gonna say nine sixty is typical.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the hours for Calpers.
Well.
And and I'll I'll look into the unemployment thing, but I believe if you hire them under the understanding that they are, this is temporary and it's only that, don't you? Not qualify?
We.
No, I I will just put this out there as a company that pays a, well, that is well beyond the threshold, there is actually a. Um, maximum someone can pay into, or a company can pay into unemployment, and as someone who works as HR. Company that is well beyond that maximum threshold that can be paid into unemployment. Um, I can definitely tell you that seasonal workers can draw unemployment, and that does come out of the.
Oh, joy.
I, I, but I do believe, um, Aggie is available on the line, so our HR consultant is here, I do believe that Calpers. Does have different limitations on that than a private employer does.
Right.
And so, um, I, Aggie is unmuted, so uh, Aggie, are you available to maybe address that?
Yeah, so, I would have to do a little bit more research into the unemployment piece, my understanding is that if it is a temporary. Position, um, and we do have a limit of hours and the person is made aware ahead of time that it is the temporary assignment. Um, we may have a different decision, but but I don't want to disagree with with what, um. With what the mayor is saying, since I just quickly reviewed it and and um. It, I think it depends on on, you know, who's reviewing the case at the moment, it does go against. Um, the city's unemployment insurance, which is a percentage that of wages that is paid into the state of California. For unemployment, um, as far as the Calpers, um, it is nine hundred and sixty-six hours. Um, because, uh, and and I think that's you and I have reviewed it together in the past.
Yeah, I believe on this item because the nine sixty rule is the same for the annuitant coming back on a limited term. Contract that if they are on a limited term contract, where it's listed as a temporary worker or seasonal worker. That essentially they would not pay into the employment insurance and therefore would not be eligible for unemployment. I believe that that's how that works, but I'm happy.
Say that again?
So I believe, if I remember this correctly from dealing with it at work. So when we have an annuitant come back and they can work, they can work up to nine, we usually do the nine sixty because it is nine sixty-six. But nine sixty, uh, it's easier for a lot of accounting purposes, so when you have an annuitant coming back, you can only hire them. For six months total per consecutive twelve months, and so that's when nine sixty comes in. But those individuals are not eligible for unemployment and therefore do not pay the unemployment insurance, and that is how they do not collect unemployment. But that isn't a new situation that I'm familiar with, um, which I believe it's it's not necessarily. Cap at the annuitant. I've, polydip, my batteries are dying, um, it's not capped at an annuitant piece, but it is based off of the temporary or seasonal. Aspect of that position, and that's why annuitants tend to have a very limited term contract, keeping them at that nine sixty and not paying into the employment. Unemployment pot, but that is just me slowly learning Calpers HR, um, so, but that's my understanding of it. Um, but yeah, I'm, i- if if we can wait for hiring on this one meeting, I mean, we can double check that.
I, well, I'm I'm challenged, I need my person like yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so I guess what I'll, what I could say to the council is that, um. I can review that and with the understanding that if we find something. Cause it's gonna take me probably until the, almost the next council meeting to get somebody potentially on board anyway. I could bring it back and say, hey, this is, this is, this is the issue, but I really would like to start the process at least. Um, in advertising.
So I'm happy to make a motion to approve the, uh, motion to approve change authorized staffing levels to include a full-time temporary maintenance worker. With an employment period not to exceed six months or nine hundred and sixty hours contingent on the unemployment. Issue that we have discussed tonight.
I mean, I, I'm more than happy to second that and move forward. Um, but first I just want to put this, because this does not need to be in the motion. Um, just on the job description, I would prefer to see something that lists that end date, I just, I don't feel like it is. Quite laid out enough. In the job.
Explicitly.
I'd like to see a little bit more explicit, um, time in there, and also just to help get them off unemployment if they're. Any other employer above, I'll happily take them starting in December.
I think you can send them up, send them up to there, yeah.
I have a published request that. All my core explanations are given nine hundred and sixty, about six months, uh, in actual job description, that's not what we do. And to clarify that it's probably a higher, it's six months, so that way there is definitely an A. And then I'll clarify. And if it's different, then it will also trigger. Okay, and with that, I will second uh, the motion, this is, we'll call again, so all those are.
It's.
So there was somebody who asked, I'm not requesting a budget amendment because I have.
Oh, we have.
So, um, I have. I just have the position of already. Budget will reflect in the new budget of June for July. That understood, alright, uh, with that, all in favor? And we'll move on to the last item, approve a plan to implement eight parking in Hetch Creek Falls. Mayor Regis.
Alright, mayor and councils, so um, this has been a discussion with staff and then, um, Mayor Clarno had brought it back up to me and. And decided to bring it forward as we're getting ready to go into summertime and. On Tuesday afternoon, every single parking stall was full, and I think it's time to start getting some money from these people out of town that aren't. One, visiting downtown, uh, and uh, just coming in, using the trail and leaving, and so, um. What I'm, what I'm bringing for the council here is, um. And that's a typo, it should be forty thousand, not fifty thousand, so, um, at Hetch Creek Falls, we receive approximately forty thousand visitors a year. Um, most of them from out of town, uh, and the increasing popularity, um, we are going to have to do some pretty substantial maintenance. Due to misuse of the trail, um, and causing excessive erosion and those type of things. Um, as al- as well as the opportunity to maybe uh, capture some some money to help us uh. Either fund our other parks or also fund um, the future Mossbury Trail, and so what uh, I have uh. Presented to you is kind of a, an overview of what that uh, area would look like, that we would restrict the parking in. And essentially, it's mostly the area there by the bottling plant, but I kind of wanted to include the area down to Linda Place. Um, because that is, the right away there is over a hundred feet wide, and we could improve that area to allow for additional parking. Before we start having to worry about uh, neighborhood impacts, um, which would be at Linda Place and and further down Dunsmere Avenue. Um, so, and I don't have a slide for this, but uh, in front of you, um, I kind of did a map there, so the idea would be. Associated with that, um, in in that general area and then work our way down, um, as we see ne- seeing. The need for it, um, so kind of the steps in this would be to order kiosk equipment, um, what I'm proposing to do is just to put a. You know, the, basically the flat parking lot kiosk, you go up to it, you. And then. And then, uh, you know, we would have to maybe develop and revise the parking ordinance, um, establish fees and times. And adopt the parking ordinance revisions and then install the signage and the kiosks for payments, um. Basic, what I've seen, if we go with just the basic model, which I'll end proposing, most of those are available in three to four weeks. Um, I feel like from a parking revision standpoint is something I'll discuss with the attorney tomorrow. Um, if you guys decide to move forward with this plan, would, we could probably have that done and everything done and completed by July one. And then, um, what I'm proposing is a staffing fee or a a fee of five dollars per hour, uh, per two hours of parking to be collected through. This, the kiosk, um, estimated cost for implementation is about fifteen thousand, um. And I believe we'd be able to recover that in less than a year, um, based on estimates in traffic, so, um. As you, on page thirty-five of the packet, um, there's kind of an estimate of ongoing costs, you know, electricity that's probably a little high. Um, you know, break even analysis, four hundred paid parking, um. Everybody in the Bay Area and everywhere who doesn't live in Siskiyou County is used to paying for parking, so for them to pay five bucks and. Go on a nice little hike to see the waterfall, I think would be a reasonable price, um, but that's open for discussion. There's a potential we could go and garner somewhere between sixty and seventy thousand a year, um, in revenue and then less expenses, and so. Um. Anyway, um, that's pretty much, uh, I'm open for discussion and any questions related to that, um.
If you don't mind it. Absolutely, here, um, as city manager Reeve, uh, explained, him and I have been talking about this for quite some time. Um, I initially started thinking about this, not necessarily from. City revenue, the, from the city revenue angle, but more from the downtown, uh, downtown and other businesses in the city angle. Um. Uh, along those lines, I have kind of been talking to a few city businesses, um, um. Getting some ideas from them, along with whether or not they just thought it was a good idea, of basically starting a program. Where if you go to Hetch Creek Falls, you pay for that parking, you bring your little, put this in the window to get into one of the businesses in town. They would do something for you, either just take that value of that ticket off said lunch bill or, uh, when I talked to the cornerstone, they mentioned. You order something, you get a free pastry if you show that, um, that ticket. Um, several other businesses had similar, similar ideas, um, basically, since we weren't sure on, when I talked to them. Uh, weren't completely sure on what kind of system we would be going with, and it was kind of just nebulous and up in the air, um, all of them were. Uh, quite happy or all of, or for the most part, all of them were in support of the idea. Um, one thing I did, uh, discuss with Aaron, uh, from Dunsmere Brewery was also, um. Having little brochures that they could give out, that would replace the parking fee, so that way if you were. At one of the restaurants in town and they said, hey, you should go check out Hetch Creek Falls, since you just were a customer here, you know, take this up there, put it in your window. And that does the same thing as the parking, so basically just trying to create a synergized way where the city can. Get a little more revenue, revenue, revenue to help support, um, the Hetch Creek area along with, um. Uh, hopefully getting some money towards other parks and Mossbury as well, and also, excuse me, a way for the down. To drive some of those forty thousand people that come a year into the businesses in the city, because you know, three to five dollars isn't much, which is the number I have had in my head. Somewhere in that range, um, but if you did, if you knew you were going to get three to five dollars off at a restaurant in Dunsmere. That might be just enough to make the decision to come to Burger Barn or Cornerstone or Yaks versus driving up to Mount Chaffsa or down to Reading. Having lunch there instead, um, so, while that isn't necessarily outlined in this proposal, this is just the. Technical proposal on putting the physical infrastructure there, there is an entire other economic development portion of this plan. Uh, that would be implemented well, as well alongside of it, um, that is more from the business owner's side. Uh, as far as either the city or the chamber would basically just need to put up some signage and some printed material to go along with it. Um, that kind of relationship hasn't been worked out quite just yet, I think we've been waiting to kind of get this out, uh. Out there, um, and then follow up with that, but to have both be launched at the same time together, so. Um, I just wanted to, before we go into council questions and then public comment, I just kind of wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that portion. Alright, with that, questions?
What is their plan of enforcement?
Well, that's, that's up for discussion, because one of the concerns, and that's something we can talk about in discussion, but uh, um. One of the considerations is that, you know, people from out of town aren't watching our meeting, so we could just say we're not gonna enforce it. So that way the locals can just go up and they can use the trail, and we just garner the run funds from everybody else. That's one thought.
The other idea I have, once again, this is not, but just kind of on the help of locals, we could have something at city hall, or if everyone just knew that all like. Hey, I'm planning on going to Hetch Creek tomorrow, but I'm gonna be kind today, hey, can you grab me one of those, you know, something like that. Good form as well, or at city hall, just, oh, you're a local, here you go, free pass, free parking in the tree, um. You know, like I said, the point of this is really not. Yeah, it's, yeah. Alright, with that, I will open this up to public comment, same rules of four, three minutes, thirty second warning, when your time is almost up. Please limit anything to this particular item, uh, and with that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you, David Hicks, I like everything the city manager said, I like everything the mayor said. And I think the biggest problem that we're gonna have is the people that don't. Come here, we're not civilized, they throw all their crap on the ground, I never go to a city park without a plastic bag in my pocket. Just because there's always some kid two feet away from the garbage can throwing his stuff on the ground, so. Um, I like the idea of not bothering to worry about enforcing parking and so. Have, I think an honor system, trusting the public is positive, will probably create. Less negative behavior like sign damage, because we'll need some signage to get this downtown and the park connected. Telling people what a great deal it is, it makes sense to me, thank you. Telling people what a great deal it is, it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen, hello there, forty-four oh nine Oak Street. How are you guys? I think this is a great idea, but I would proceed with caution. I think you already have that caution. That local residents can park there and go for a quick hike, uh that people can slip out of the water factory and you know, go for a quick hike. That we keep that environment, we get to enjoy our town. And so I would advocate for us, local citizens not having to pay. I like the idea of it being voluntary, out of town, people aren't gonna know any different. They're gonna pay, they're gonna pay their parking fee, right? I don't know that you'd have to enforce it. I think people would just do it because the sign says to. So we'll get, we'd save on enforcement that way. So uh, I would encourage messaging that goes with the parking tolls. It says, the funds for this go to maintain this area, so it continues to be available for you. So that people don't get the idea that we're just trying to take advantage of our natural resources to build money out of people. But rather it really does cost money to have these things available, uh, as is demonstrated by the beautiful new rail up at the viewpoint. That wasn't free, so, thanks.
Thank you. Right, anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item.
So, when you look on page thirty-five, minute mitigation considerations, I was, I was kind of preemptively understanding that these comments would come forward. Uh, with those same, same concerns and um just talking with staff internally. Um, so a couple of thoughts would be consider an annual pass to be issued by the city. You know, we could do that for. You know, we could do that for a minimal cost for residents, or we provide a pass in their water bill. You know, once a year, like, hey, you, you, you pay your water bill and you get, you get a pass for your vehicle to go to Hedge Creek Falls. And, and maybe that would actually encourage some use of Hedge Creek calls that we don't have currently from our own residents, right? Cause some people don't even know it exists. I've had conversations like, what do you, you live here and you don't know that exists?
Just stick your whole water bill.
Right, and then uh, the, you know, another one was, you know, not enforce it. One of the discussions we have is like, you know, well, maybe we don't enforce it unless we have it, you know, like a long-term parker. Cause we do have some locations where we have long-term park. That was one of the things that, you know, I, I thought of, the other one was uh, the other one that I'd like to see and that I did not make as a part of the motion. But I wanted to have a discussion about was I, I feel compelled that we should designate these funds to a special fund. And so that way it's very clear on the amount of revenue that's coming in and the purpose of what we're going to use that revenue for. And so if we wanted to look at, you know, that aspect of it and, and it doesn't necessarily need to be a part of this motion, maybe it's something we bring back after. You know, we clarify some of the boundaries in which we wanna restrict these funds to. Um, then, just because I know as time goes on and none of us are sitting here, people will put this in place. Then, if that just goes to the general fund, then it could just very easily be absorbed and go away. And then, oh, well, we don't have enough money to do trail maintenance, you know, twenty years from now. Well, that's, that's not what I like. That's not how I like to manage and that's now how I think we should, should, you know, operate. As a, as a community, because it's, you know, this. You know, this is really because of the, the tourism that's coming in is really where the money's gonna come from. So let's, let's use it for a positive gain for our community and, and I think that's uh, that's one thing that I, I would like the council to consider.
Okay, I'll just put this out there. One other thing I'd, I'd kind of like to do is I'd like to maybe have the discussion. We can have a discussion on fees, but I would also like to not necessarily pass. As part of whatever we do, anything that sets the fee, so that way.
Well, you can't, because you have to publicly notice fee setting.
Even for, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Perfect, yeah, um.
Yeah, do you want me to rip this? I have, I have comments.
Go ahead.
Okay, do you have comments?
No, go ahead.
Okay, you have my Donald Schute book, which is the High Cost of Free Parking. Bless his soul, he passed away this year.
Yep.
He is the father of parking. Um, so first off, so the idea is you park and you just get a ticket. So there's no assigned parking stalls.
Correct.
So we're not talking about any of that, okay. So how are we gonna deal with semis? Semis do park there overnight and they do park there during the day.
Yeah, and.
So we're gonna have, yeah.
Yeah, that's one of, that's what I, my thought was like, how do we work that in the ordinance? And that's some, a conversation I wanna have with the city attorney and with Mark and how do we wanna, how do we best mitigate that? Mark has been on it pretty, pretty solid when those semis are on our side of the fence and not on the freeway side of the fence. Like, if they're there more than twenty-four hours, we're on them.
Yeah.
And, and they typically are moving along unless some, there's something maintenance-wise that's causing them to be there longer, which we could. And normally, I haven't seen them really that much during the summer. It's mostly in the fall and winter when we see more of those issues. But, I mean, it could happen anytime.
Yeah, so that, that's my first thing is we're gonna have to figure out semis, truck trailers, U-Hauls, things like that. Because that area does not have any public parking and a lot of those areas in North Dunsmere do not necessarily have driveways large enough for certain things.
Truck stop.
I do, yeah, exactly. Um, the other thing too is um, when you're going to be setting the fee, two hours. I don't know who spends two hours at Hedge Creek, like you really should park, time yourself, parking, walking there, enjoying it and time yourself back. And that would be the typical time that someone's there. Um, I know you have the placer data or something in here, but.
It's actually in there, I think it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Six minutes or something like that.
Correct, so it doesn't make sense to pay five bucks for two hours, no one's gonna pay for that. And it like, it's just, it's, it's silly to pay for a time amount that you're not going to ever really realistically get up to. So I, I would say that needs to be adjusted on this. Um, just kinda several other options, I, you have to enforce it. I, I'm gonna be honest, you, you do have to enforce it. People are not gonna use it after a while, word will get out that nobody enforces it.
The last thing, or the one thing I do wanna put for the two-hour portion is that if ever, if we ever do get Mossbury, we will most likely go to whoever.
But you can adjust it at that point, but I, I'm gonna say right now, like if I were an out-of-towner and I saw that and I realized there was no enforcement, I wouldn't pay for it. I mean, most people are not gonna pay for it, because that's what people do. Um, just, this is from professional experience. People don't currently move their cars in a two-hour parking spot. People do not currently move their cars in a red parking spot here. Or other communities, because there is no parking enforcement. That's very apparent, um, even for people who don't live here. Um, I'm just saying this just because I do this and I think about it on a frequent basis. I like the idea, I think it's a really, you know, neat thing to do. I think there's a lot of unknowns related to it that need to be flushed out. Um, again, I understand the annual pass thing, I understand the economic program for it. Um, but it seems really complicated and kind of Occam's razor part, like whatever is easiest to like. Dole out and consistently do is going to be the thing that works, um, and making it cost-effective. Um, those are, those are just some of the things that I have off of my head right now. The other thing too is you're probably gonna need a bigger budget than fifteen thousand dollars, cause you're gonna need concrete for the pad for the kiosk and then ballard. So people don't hit it and make sure it's affixed to the ground, cause people will take it. Um, no, I, these are literal things that we have to deal with. Um, you know, in planning, you don't think we have to think about these things, but we think about these things. Um, someone will take it, someone will vandalize it. It is a guarantee that that will happen regardless of the amount of money that you actually spend on it. Um, I just had my first lovely interaction with the city of LA and just, you know, feces on walk buttons. Like, you'd think that that would be something that's safe and people don't mess with, but they do. Um, but that's a, that's a whole thing there. Um, so I'm not against it. I think there's a lot of unknowns for it. I, I don't think it's, you know, from a planning perspective, I don't think it's a tight project. I think there's a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up before it is going to be successful. In my, in, in my professional opinion. Um, but I think it's great. I think people should pay for parking. Um, I'm a big pay-for-your-parking type thing, um, even downtown. Um, so, which I know is controversial. Um, but if I get my book back, which is like a bible, um, thank you, no, you're good. You can keep it. Uh, but yeah, so I'm fine with it. Those are just some of the things that come up for me on there is. I think it's not gonna be very intuitive for a lot of people to do that. Like, yeah, people in San Francisco are used to paying for parking in San Francisco. But they're not used to paying for parking in some of these other cities and other amenities. I mean, if you think about our region, where do you have to pay to enter Bernie Falls? Uh, that's really the only one, and honestly, that's weird to me that that is the only one that you have to pay to get into, um, or pay to park essentially. Um, I can't remember if Castle Craig's is a pay-to-park.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's, it's a state park, yeah. So state parks, it's like that, that makes sense, that's going on. This is not a state park. I don't think it's gonna be very intuitive for people to automatically pay. And then I think you do need to enforce it. Um, you need to do strategic enforcement. It doesn't necessarily have to be all day, every day. But if you do start to get information on your peak hours, it's when you would program your parking enforcement is at peak hours.
Yeah, and I already know the peak hours based on place or datas is between, it's around the lunchtime, like, you know, eleven to three.
Yeah, so yeah, tho- those are just my perspective, but I, I think it's fine. Yeah, it's good.
Well, I will put forward a motion that we move forward, um.
Be- before you. Let me, let me comment before you make your motion. So, I, I appreciate everybody's comments and especially Juliana's. Cause I know you've worked in this realm. So I guess what I would like to ask the council for is. The authority to move forward with the purchase of the kiosk equipment because of the timeline. And then I could work through all of the administrative stuff on the, with the planner and, and attorney and stuff like that in parallel. And so that way the equipment shows up and hopefully, I mean, I can always put the equipment in the conax until we have everything else in place. So I've kinda would like to move forward with that, because our timeline could be potentially six weeks.
And, and you will need to check with the city attorney, but I believe it's a very noble thought to dedicate the funds from this to this area. But I don't believe you can legally do that unless it's a, uh, an assigned assessment or an assigned tax that is special. But you can, you can talk to David about that, but my understanding is parking fees cannot be attributed to a specific use.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Unless it's a, unless it's a district or assessment, like that's, that's essentially what it is, is people have to vote on special earmarking is essentially what it is. Is it is not legal to earmark things unless it has been voted to be such.
We'll check with him on that, but regardless, it'd be nice to.
You, you, you could do a parking district that, that would do that. Yeah, you can do a special assessment. Yeah, but we can check with the city attorney if there is something available for that, but I'm, I'm not familiar with a mechanism.
Even if it's a parking district, we only, and we're only going so far out, then it's just affected property owners. So that would essentially, most of those are ours.
Yeah.
Well, so what I'd like to see, and this was gonna be the motion, which I think ties in, and well, with, as this piece you just said. Uh, basically to move forward with the initial phases of this purchasing and. So that way, uh, just get started looking at purchasing the actual unit and also start working on getting a lot of these questions answered. While we also, and then have a second, um, second item, uh, when we get a little closer. Uh, that sets a lot more of the few, the other, the other pieces in terms of how much we're gonna charge enforcement. And also, uh, basically have a lot more of the community portion, or the community and business portion set at that meeting as well. Um, so that way that can be part of the, um, the proposal. So I think that this is a good, good start. And I'm looking forward to following up on it in a month or two. All right, uh, with that, I move that we, um, authorize the city manager to, uh, begin looking into. Um, paid parking at Hedge Creek Falls, including, um, purchasing now about fifty thousand dollars. For a meter, um.
A second.
All right, all those in favor or wait? I tried to do it earlier when you didn't need to and I tried to bypass it now. It, this is what happens when you put a roll call on the last item of the meeting. All right.
Right, Vice Mayor Sebring.
Aye.
Uh, council member Lucchese.
Aye.
Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
Mayor Clarno.
Aye, right. All right, and with that, uh, we're moving to future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they would like to see on the next couple of agendas?
It looks like we have quite a bit. Do we know when personnel policy is gonna be out?
Um, yeah, we were waiting on the attorney, so now I can have the attorney review it and.
Well, there we go.
We will move forward.
Well.
We're hoping, um, I'm gonna put that as one of the top priorities, close to the top, not the top, but close. And so hopefully, uh, it will eat June, May fifteenth, that's the goal. But I didn't write a date on there because I noticed I had missed it, them and I was. One, waiting on the union to finish and the other was, uh, feels appropriate for the city attorney to weigh in.
Cool, just to make sure to add, um. The fire severity zones, well, that won't be a future agenda item, that'll just be on the next agenda. But make sure to add the hedge creek parking, um, to future agenda items as well, so we can keep track of it.
I also added, uh, update for downtown wifi, I'll work on that.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right, uh, if there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.